Calling to order the Monday, May 21st, 2018, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protown Baker. Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here.
First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Gavin. Any changes, additions, or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let us pray. Good and loving God, Creator of us all, thank you for schools and public safety who exercise caution in ensuring the safety of our children and community. Thank you that nothing tragic whatsoever came out of today's district-wide shelter event. As we discuss and deliberate the issues before us this evening, help us to assume positive intent in everyone who speaks, to listen, to decide, and to move forward together, recognizing that forward momentum is not inevitable. Finally, God, I ask that you would bless all of our leaders, our elected leaders, our business leaders, our community leaders. Bless each and every member of Berkeley that we together might lean into all that you have in store. In Jesus' strong name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have now reached the citizens' comments portion of our meeting. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff, please sign in on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. Reminder, you may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, Wendy Zabramski, Berkeley. I have actually two things, and I did put my name on there. I would like a response for both. Number one, Tudy and Tallulah's moving into that building and they're making an awful lot of facade changes. I was just wondering if that was approved by, in a public meeting from Planning Commission. I don't remember seeing anything, and it's quite a bit of change they're making. Okay, the second issue is the parking issue. I have brought it up many times. This time, I'm asking for a response. There are several spots that are really bad, and I know everybody's aware of the parking, but it just seems to keep just getting pushed down the road. There's a lot of frustration. There's a lot of frustration on the Facebook sites. There was a new, big one over, what was it? Oh, come on. The, I'll get it. I don't know what it is. 11 Mile and, not Princeton, but whatever comes right there. I can't remember the name. There's a church, and I guess it gets absolutely crazy. It's like they park on both sides of the roads, one-lane traffic. You know, it's absolutely a mess when they're coming out. People are just, you know, they're walking in front of cars. You know, leaving out onto 11 Mile is a mess. It was just kind of brought to my attention, so I thought I would share that. Certainly, I'd like these things looked into. Also, you know, where I am at, south of Gardner, between Gardner and Tyler, the shopping center, I'd certainly like to see something done, maybe permit parking along Gardner and Tyler, because I understand that people in the beginning of Tyler are, you know, having the same issues. You know, and I don't know, maybe you guys need to get all together, all those owners, and, you know, get them to sit down and talk about shared parking. You know, there was a false little ocelot in the parking there, and on 12 Mile and Gardner north of, or, yeah, north side, there's a big church there, a big old brick church, and it's the same thing, I guess, for Sunday there. You know, they're along 12 Mile, you know, up, you know, into the neighborhoods, and it just gets to be really dangerous. Wakefield and 12 and the bank issue. Coolidge, whole Coolidge, you know, business district, and of course, parking at Alex's and all the way down the road, and their employees down the road. You know, with that memo not too long ago from the DDA director, you know, talking of reducing parking requirements for businesses, you know. You know, it may be at times that stuff looks empty, but there's times that it's crazy, and sometimes it's all at the same time. You know, now, Amici's is now their outside area is open. That adds probably 15 cars. You know, it's, I don't know, it just goes on and on, and, you know, I'd like to see something done, and I would like a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Margaret Grassa, Berkeley resident. I am also the chairman of the Berkeley Tree Board. I'd like to let you know that we had a very successful Arbor Day tree planting on April 21st. The Moms Club brought all their little kids. They were delightful with their little gloves and their shovels, and we had future arborists digging away and stuff. And also, the 4-H Club. Berkeley has a 4-H Club, which is very active in the community, and they helped us plant three trees in the totlot. So if anybody would like to see what size the trees are that are part of our fall tree sale, the three new trees at the totlot would give you an idea, and they're labeled, so you can see what kind they are and stuff. And then, the fall tree sale, DPW worked really hard to get the nursery to give them a list of trees and prices and stuff now. The list is out, it's on the city website, there's printed copies at City Hall, at the library, and at DPW, or if you call DPW, they will send it to you either electronically or through the mail. It's professionally planted. If it's in the green belt, which is between the sidewalk and the curb in the City of Berkeley, but if you want it on private property, they will deliver it to your home, and if you really need help planting it, I can probably get you volunteers to help plant it. But it's a great deal, because they're delivered to you, and if you get them from a nursery, you would probably pay for delivery what you pay for the tree and delivery through our sale. Also, there is still more openings on the Tree Board. If anybody would like to volunteer, our Tree Board has been very active working on the ordinances, which we brought before you a month ago, was it? We hope to bring that back to you again. I sent all of you an email, if you have any ideas on that. Protown Baker suggested that we bring it back for another work session, so we're trying to get that all in shape, and we'll bring it back to you in the near future. Our Facebook page, I am trying to post pictures and some information or some links about all the trees that are available on that fall tree sale. And we're at 97 friends, and I'd love to break 100, so if anybody would like to join it, City of Berkeley, MI Tree Board. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret.
Matt Church, Berkeley Library. Just wanted to mention to everyone that the library will be transitioning to a new online computer system, so over the Memorial Holiday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, a big transition will take place. Get in touch with the library if you have any questions. The system will be down, you won't be able to renew anything, placeholders, things like that, but we'll take care of you when we open. On Tuesday, we're going to do a delayed opening at 2:00 PM, just to give time to make sure things are up and running in the morning, so, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, seeing nobody else running up to the microphone, we will move on to our order of business here, and we will begin with the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the item on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, April 16th, 2018. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1326. Ordinance 0418. Matter of considering for second reading and adoption of an amendment, Section 30-433 of Division 1, Chapter 30, Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to Modify Permitted Hours for Peddlers and Solicitors in the City. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Ordinance number 0518. Matter of considering for second reading and adoption of repealing Division 4 of Article 5 of Chapter 2, Communications Advisory Committee of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support. Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Dean, even though I'm the only one that could hear it, I heard it. Are there any additions or corrections, or any issues with the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. Now, we now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to agenda item number two, please.
Motion number M3318. Matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M3318?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Gavin?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have two boards represented here this evening. The first, the Historical Committee. The Historical Committee, the existing members did review the application of Ms. Vicki Lynn Stoll, who is, was excited about working with the museum, and they, through that, she was also recruited to take part in the committee as well. She is being proposed to the City Council for a term expiring on July 1st of 2019. She does come with the support of the Historical Committee. The next board is the newly-formed Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee. If you recall from the initiating documents, the initial terms here are to be staggered. There'd be two-year terms after the first round, but for the new members being appointed to this body, there are three members being appointed to a one-year term, there are two members being appointed to a two-year term. As stated, all subsequent appointments will be for two years. So the lineup proposed to you this evening is Susan Sitrero with the term expiring of July 1st, 2019, Amy J. Keely with the term expiring July 1st, 2019, Elizabeth Petry, or Petrie, I'm sorry, with the term expiring July 1st, 2019, Colleen Groveland with the term expiring in July 1, 2020, and John Long with the term expiring July 1st, 2020. These will join the existing members that were carried over from the, now as of tonight, the abolished Communications Committee to form a seven-member committee, as outlined in the initiating documents approved by City Council. And those are the items for you.
Is there discussion on any of the applicants tonight? Councilmember Henan?
Just wanted to mention, with the Communications Board, we had 11 applicants, and that was excellent, to see the continued interest and engagement. I did get to speak with, you know, all of them, and, you know, while I think all of them would do a good job, I am satisfied with, you know, this slate.
Thank you.
So, and I would like to make sure we continue to reach out to those that do apply and thank them for doing so, and those that, you know, we can't seat everyone, but there are other boards that we have vacancies. We heard about the Tree Board already tonight, so look for, there are other ways you can volunteer as well.
Sure. Thank you. Any additional comments? No. Councilmember Henan said what I was going to say. I think it's important to know that we did have a lot of applicants, you know. It's rare for us to be able to kind of start a brand-new committee like this, and a committee that serves such an important function in today's environment and how folks communicate. And I think that's part of why we had some, you know, all these, all this interest, and as you said, you know, we couldn't, can't seat all 11 people, you have too many people and the other boards never get anything accomplished. But there will be additional openings, there are additional openings on other boards, and we can't do anything we do up here without the volunteers in the city. And I know that it's hopefully said at least every night that we're here meeting, but it needs to be said every day. We certainly appreciate everything that the residents do, and if it wasn't for the residents, you know, we wouldn't be the city that we are today. So I want to thank everybody here who has applied to donate their time and talents to the city, and in about 30 seconds, we will formally thank you. Seeing no other comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M3418. Matter of considering a special land use approval, SU 0118, to FSC Holdings LLC, who is proposing to use adjoining buildings 2038 Coolidge and 2050 Coolidge as a cooperative use office space on the first floor in the downtown zoning district.
Is there a motion to approve M3418?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Henan with support. Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As is our process for special land use considerations, this item does come to you after being first reviewed by the Planning Commission. They forwarded to the City Council a recommendation for approval with the condition of the installation of bike racks. We're joined by our Community Development Director, Mr. Tim McLean, and we'll just note that this qualifies for a special land use because it is the use of office space on the first floor of the downtown zoning district, which is, in this case, is on Coolidge. So, Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At the Planning Commission meeting last month, the Commission unanimously recommended approval of the special land use. The square footage of both buildings is roughly 40, just under 4,300 square feet. There is no requirement for onsite parking due to the proximity of municipal parking within 500 feet. However, if there was no municipal parking for an office-type use, they would be required to have roughly 13 onsite parking spaces. The applicants are here this evening to answer any questions that the City Council has, and I am here as well to answer any questions.
Questions from City Council. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, so, how many spots do, I know they aren't required any, how many spots do they have available? Roughly, I believe it's...
We have approximately, council members, we have approximately seven spots in the back of the building right now designated for this particular building, in addition to a garage, which is part of the space which we plan to keep and continue to use as parking.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, sorry, my name's Ari Zarterian, one of the members of FSC Holdings LLC.
Thank you.
Here with my partners, Aaron Friedman and Daniel Stockeve.
Okay. I'm supportive, completely supportive of this. I work remotely, and while I wouldn't personally use this, I work with a lot of people that would love to be able to have this kind of space available to them. None of them live in Berkeley, unfortunately for you, but parking is a small concern of mine. Would you be willing to consider putting up a sign if anybody, directing overflow parking towards the municipal lots, just so people, you know, see the lots are full, they know there's available municipal lots and they don't need to park in the residential areas?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And speaking to the previous owners of this particular space who also used it as an office building, they informed us that the majority of their employees did use that municipal lot, and it is our intent to inform the clients that use this space to make that lot a preference as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it, are you requesting that that be a part of conditional approval, or is that just a mere strong suggestion? So I know how to proceed.
I would like to make it a conditional approval. I don't know if it is legally allowed.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, reasonable conditions are allowed in connection with a special land use consistent with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and certainly issues relative to potential increase demands associated with a new use and parking, trying to address and mitigate that seems to be a reasonable type of condition. Any type of condition does have to be articulated as part of the motion, so if that's going to be an additional motion beyond what is being recommended by the Planning Commission, it would have to be so noted in the motion.
Then I move to amend the motion to add the condition requiring a sign directing overflow parking towards the municipal lots.
And again, through the chair, that would have to be subject to the city's sign ordinance relative to sign issues associated with that.
We will ask in a second for the seconder, but, Mr. McLean, do you have any issues with this?
I do not, as that would likely fall under wayfinding. That type of sign would be exempt from permitting.
Right. Councilmember Dean, as the supporter of the initial motion, do you have any problems amending the motion?
I don't, and I also ironically sit on the wayfinding subcommittee of the Downtown Development Authority, and I know that in our plans that we have, such as they are now, and it's all being formulated, parking is one of the things that we will be directing people to in all areas of the city, and so, per Mr. McLean, I don't think I'm with you. I don't think there's a specific, like, I think we can put up that, you know, parking sign without an issue, because that was one of the things that we, when we took on the study, identifying all available parking in the city and then implementing signage to direct people to that parking. So I would, and I'm not, I just would think that that would be, come under the auspices of that. So I'm confident, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm confident that there would be signage for the parking for their building.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, is that satisfactory? Do we have to have a separate motion on top of the motion?
Oh, I think the motion has amended.
Good.
It would suffice.
Okay. Additional comments? No?
I actually, I'll go ahead.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. We talked about bike racks. I noticed in your drawing that you show four bike racks holding two bikes each. Is that still going to be in the plan?
Yes, there's a patio in the back of the space, and that patio, we intend to have those bike racks there, and we made sure to incorporate that pursuant to the meeting we had with the Planning Commission originally.
That looks very nice. I think that's a good addition to that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
So I do have an initial question. I love the layout that I'm looking at.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is your intent to have, some people might like sign long-term leases for space, some people, I only need this for a month, or I just need an hour because I'm having a meeting. So is it all those things, or...
All of those things, yeah. I mean, it'll really be dependent. I mean, we intend to have people sign one-year leases, one-month leases, six-month leases, or there are times when people may just need to have a meeting remotely for the day, or use the conference room, or maybe there's some people that are in town from out-of-state or hosting some out-of-state clients or something like that, and they need to use one of the booths or the tables, or...
And the ping-pong.
And ping-pong, yeah, of course. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So all of those things, yes.
We just heard a little bit about it. Could you tell us just a little bit more for those folks that maybe are just hearing about this for the first time and didn't see the Planning Commission, kind of your vision and your idea here?
So the concept of the business is called coworking office space. It's kind of a newer trend. There's a major company out there called WeWorks that's gaining more and more reputation. I think they have almost 40 locations throughout the country now, and the idea is, as opposed to like traditional office space where you sign a three-to-five-year lease and a lot of overhead, this model allows smaller businesses more flexibility with less overhead to get started. It also helps with networking, so you could be working alongside other businesses that you may not have the opportunity to, and especially with emerging technologies, new apps, things of that nature. There's a lot of synergies by, I might be a web designer, and now I'm sitting next to a graphic designer who's at a different company, so there's kind of some natural synergies there as well. So it's definitely a new concept, but it's gaining a lot of momentum in the country.
Without getting too much into your business model, it was kind of alluded to earlier that people could have, how is it, is it an hourly, is it a daily, is it a monthly, is it an annual?
Sure.
What are the options? All of the above?
Yeah, well, the options are to be flexible. That's a part of the model. So one of the things we're considering is a hot desk, which is a monthly fee. Think, I would implore you guys to think of it more as like a gym membership than a traditional lease. So these will be members, not necessarily tenants.
Okay.
And, yeah, we'll do month-to-month, although we will have private offices in there. If people want to, say, get a special discount, they could sign up for six-month terms, 12-month terms, et cetera, and we'd be willing to negotiate different rates for that to secure long-term revenue streams. But, yeah, the idea is to have flexibility at different levels, so you could pay a low-tier and just have a hot desk and be able to bounce around to different areas in the office, or you could pay a little more and maybe get a private office or a little nicer desk and area with some extra perks, like extra coffee, use of the copy machine at a preferred rate, some other perks. We're talking about maybe getting like a Bowflex machine or something to throw in the garage.
Council meeting.
We'll see.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say, this, I think it's a great concept, I think it's worked really well in a lot of other areas, and also, just as a side note, I want to thank you for the willingness to kind of do some changes to what you'd initially proposed, not only from at the Planning Commission, but also tonight here, and your willingness to engage on that, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is a use that we don't typically see, this sort of use, and oftentimes in our downtown, we're looking, you know, more of a retail focus, and our DDA director, I believe, at the Planning Commission meeting, and mentioned this, but this particular use with the way that things are going and how folks work these days and what they're actually looking for in their personal efficiencies, this does make a lot of sense, and I'm happy that we're going to have an opportunity in our city for folks who are either in our city or neighboring cities to be able to take advantage of that space. So, and I also want to thank you guys, Ari, Aaron, and Daniel, for being here and being able to answer our questions.
Absolutely. Dan and I are both residents of the city. We're all very excited to get this venture underway.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Seeing nothing else, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M3418?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Oh, sure. Well, it's already, yep, it's passed, but you can speak.
Wendy Zabramski, again. I just want to say that's a wonderful, wonderful idea, and that I think that's going to work out well, and I want to commend Dennis on, you know, that idea of parking, that makes a whole lot of sense. Somebody's been thinking about the parking.
And with that, we'll move on to item, oh, sorry, what?
I wanted to follow up with staff on just a couple of tangential related issues. I know we're looking at, considering looking at some of the municipal lot ordinances, and maybe if we consider looking at if they are, you know, if they're abutting the municipal lot, we don't need a sign, I don't think, but if they are a certain distance away but using those spots as part of their quota, that we, you know, have the requirement to have sign and directing people there. And then, when we have conditional approvals, I have just a procedural... And then, when we have conditional approvals, I have just a procedural question. How do we track and verify that those things are followed through on?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll answer. Speaking on behalf of the Community Development Department, those are registered. The director takes notes, and then it's sent over to the building official, it's communicated through him verbally, and the written, the conditions are written in on the notations in the BSNA system. So that's how our process, that's how our staff knows to look specifically for those items.
Okay.
Whether it be bike racks, whether it be the wayfinding signage, or something that can do what the DDA's been working on.
Okay. And for the folks at home, BSNA is our computer system for...
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. With that, we will move on to item number four. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M. 3518, matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for animal control services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Roiloke. The City of Berkeley will provide animal control services for the City of Roiloke for $46,084.56 for the first year, an annual increase of 3% a year. This intergovernmental agreement shall be for a term of five years, beginning on first day of July 2018 and ending on the 30th day of June 2023.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3518?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Dean, with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Chief, city manager, who wants to?
I'll start, and I'll move over to our director. This is actually a renewal of an existing agreement that we've had with Roiloke now for many years. It's worked out well. It's certainly mutually beneficial to both cities. Included in your packet is a memo from our Public Safety Director outlining the exact costs to the City of Roiloke, and thereby our revenue, both in a yearly and a monthly format. This has been reviewed by the City Attorney's Office, and included in your agreement is also the agreement itself outlining the parameters of our relationship with the City of Roiloke. So, Mr. Director?
Can't really add much to that. This is really something we're already doing. We did tweak it a little bit procedurally, but the relationship with Roiloke's been a very good one, and it's mutually beneficial to both cities.
Any questions for the chief? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick question for you. How similar is the contract to the previous one that expired recently?
It's almost exact.
So it just changes in pricing?
In a little bit of a, little bit of a grammar cleanup and formatting cleanup.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I like that. Any additional comments? No, this is a, as was mentioned, this is a relationship that we've had for a number of years. It's an example of two neighboring communities working together, so that we're not duplicating services and adding additional costs, and it makes a lot of sense, and it's made sense, and I look to continue this in the future. Seeing no other comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 3518?
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M. 3618, matter of approving a contract with Vigilante Security Incorporated, 2681 Industrial Row Drive, Troy, Michigan, 48084, to install an alarm system for $3,348 from office equipment 101-738-983000.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3618?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is a part of a planned improvement to the library security system. Mr. Church went out to bid and received some bids back, and both, covering both ownership as well as leasing materials. So you'll see that, that, a memo, and the agreement with Vigilante included in your packet. Mr. Church?
Great, thank you.
Mr. Director?
So our alarm system was 20 years old, so this was a planned replacement. We issued an RFP. The project was sent out to 193 companies. We held a mandatory pre-bid meeting just to walk everyone through. The RFP was framed in such a way that we really left it up to the companies to make recommendations. So we listed high-level objectives that we wanted to accomplish with the design, and then left it up to them to recommend a system that they felt would accomplish those. Seven companies showed up at the pre-bid meeting, and then five proposals were received and opened on May 8th. So two companies offered lease options, two companies offered owned options, and one bid was not considered. I looked at the long-term cost of those, kind of at annual increments, to see how it would play out. Our current system is 20 years old, so we did plan it out that far in advance to see what the total cost would look like. And in the end, Vigilante Security really emerged as the best choice to accomplish the project in a fiscally responsible way. So that's my recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for our library director? No. We all feel very secure.
Perfect.
Steve isn't here, so I had to, I had to do that. Well, seeing no comments, we obviously have seen the specs, and we've looked at everything, and certainly trust your judgment. You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And now we're going to be extra secure as well, so.
Good.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 3618?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. 3618 has been approved. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M. 3718, matter of approving a contract with Expert Lawn &amp; Snow, 21083 Mound Road, Warren, Michigan, 48091, to perform nuisance cuts at a cost not to exceed $96 per hour charge from nuisance cuts 101-371-822004.
Is there a motion to approve M. 3718?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those unfamiliar with the term nuisance cuts, this is when the city has to, after a reasonable notice period, go out and actually cut the lawn of either a commercial, or no, a residential property. So this is a, in a time when a neighbor has ignored the community standard and has allowed the grass to grow above, I believe it's seven?
Eight inches.
Eight inches. And let's say, in that point, Expert Lawn, if approved this evening, would be the actual contract that comes out and physically cuts the lawn. We go to a third-party vendor on these items. This is set time for this program to occur, so it starts in May and it goes through, I believe, the end of the growing season, and then stops in the fall. So every year, we have to go out and seek a new contractor, and as you can see, we went out to bid, got a couple of different bids back, and in this situation, selected a high-quality vendor, someone that we've worked with in the past for some other residential lawn services, some benefiting our seniors. This is meant to be a prohibitive item. These money that somebody would be charged from the contractor would be, the city would also attach their fees, and obviously, it's meant to be prohibitive, so that this does not need to be a repeat visit to an offender's property. So a little bit of context on what nuisance cuts is. We're joined by our, again, by our Community Development Director, Tim McLean, if there are any questions from council.
So you are recommending to not use this as your lawn service?
I, they do great work. I wouldn't do it at this price.
Okay. Mr. Director?
Well, as you see, expert is not the low bid. They were actually the high bid, but as the city manager alluded to, you know, the intent is to not have to use these guys. So I think the cost reflects what we're trying to do with the nuisance cuts. It's important to know that over the last 10 years, 26% of all of our code violations are for grass and weeds.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding you and the manager correctly, in most circumstances and most instances, when we are looking at bids, we tend to seek out the highest qualified low bidder with references, but in this instance, since we are looking to be a little more prohibitive with this, searching out the lowest bidder might not have the intended consequence?
Yes, sir. It's also important to note that with the nuisance cuts, this is intended to be, it's a cost-neutral venture for the city, as the cost for this falls to the resident.
Certainly.
And also, Mr. Mayor, for me, the fact that we, they have shown to be great partners in other properties is also coming into play here. Once we have satisfied a notice period, we really want the item to be, we really want the violation remedied as soon as possible, and we found experts to be very responsive in the past. So even if we only have one or two items for them in a given week, we won't be placed on a back burner, and a violation won't be allowed to persist. So we know that we would have a good working relationship with them as well.
Great, thank you. Comments? Councilmember Blanchard?
Do we have experience with this company and other applications?
Yes, sir. They've worked with the Recreation Department to provide the senior cut program, and so they've, except we know they do quality work.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. My, I certainly understand the deterrent portion of it. I guess my question is more from the tracking side of things. So how are we, how are we going to actually be accounting for work that is already done, or that is actually done? So do they have an, some sort of online portal that we can access as a city that'll show before-and-after stamped photos, or something like dated photos that show when the cut happened, you know, that it actually was cut, and that, you know, we're not having any type of doubling of invoices for something that may not have happened?
I will find out the answer to that question, and I will have an answer for you very soon.
Thank you. I did see in the packet, though, I mean, I did see the first part of that, is it does look like there will be pictures taken on the front end of it, but I think it might be something to potentially include on the back end as well.
Assuming it will be part of the new tracking processes that we're instituting for code enforcement as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
How much have we been charging in the past per hour?
We have actually had a per hourly structure to our contract previously. We actually used to do it by square foot, and so the code enforcement officer would actually follow up after the cuts, they'd be notified that the cuts have been made. The code enforcement officer would go out and measure the physical space that was, had to be cut. We had a couple of concerns about that, because it put the code enforcement officer on the property after the violation had been remedied. So it was, and potentially a dangerous situation for them to be on a property after, obviously, we've had to take some corrective action on the property. So this is the first time that we've done this under an hourly rating, which seems far more appropriate.
Okay. And also, what is the $50 administrative fee?
That covers the city's cost and processing complaints, like, as mentioned earlier, going through the notice process, the time that the inspector has to spend on it, photographing, following up, attempting to contact, and then the, basically, it's the processing side of things. So the, an individual's failure to meet a standard does not get supplemented by the community as a whole, so they are completely responsible for the costs associated with their violation.
Both the $96 per hour and the administrative fee?
The $96 will be a complete pass-through. The city does not capture any portion of that. We recoup our costs purely through the administrative portion.
Okay.
Councilmember Blanchard?
I'm also, thank you.
I thought that was a question. Anybody else want to talk about the nuisance cuts? Seeing no additional comments, thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 3718?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. M. 3718 has passed. Ms. Boucher? I was waiting for you to say what. Would you please read item number seven? I feel like I don't give you enough time sometimes to get ready, so just delaying.
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing to consider the proposed 2018-19 annual operating budget and supporting tax rates for the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
At 7:42 and 35 seconds, I will open the public hearing on our operating budget and supporting tax rates for the City of Berkeley. Please come to the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and comments. Well, seeing nobody preparing to come to the microphone, I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:43 and 15 seconds. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 1818, matter of approving a resolution of the City of Berkeley, of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, approving the 2018-19 through 2024-25 Capital Improvements Plan of the City of Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve the 2024-25 CIP?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of four resolutions that come before the city council in order to, that constitute the whole of the budget approval process. The, we're joined by finance staff, both of our, our finance director and then John Pepperman, who served as our interim finance director until Ms. Ginger Burke Miller was hired. It's a great opportunity for everyone to meet Ginger as our new finance director. But as stated, there are four resolutions to go into the approval of the budget process. Finance staff, do you guys have prepared remarks available, specific? So this one speaks specifically to the city's capital, or I'm sorry, yes, to the city's capital improvements plan, yes. So I will turn it over to the finance staff to give us some notes on this particular item.
So we want to start with the capital improvement plan. Pardon me.
While they're looking for that, just some context. The capital improvements plan is how we plan for large investments in the city's facilities, the city's infrastructure, and things like that. This is separate from the equipment replacement plan that includes things like vehicles, equipment, or office equipment, things like that. This is actually physical investments into the city itself. So this, in this situation, it includes things like improvements to the public safety building, city parks, buildings themselves, things like that. So, finance?
Sure. So for this budget year, the total for the capital improvement plans for the period mentioned is $18,417,225. 2018-19 CIP anticipates that we will expend $4,946,403 in projects will be appropriated by the city council. Some of the significant projects are $375,000 for various park rehabilitation and recreation building repairs. Majority of the rehab and updates, $360,000, are planned for merchants on the Oxford Park. City plans to receive a $180,000 grant that will help offset those costs. $110,000 for library parking lot repair and renovate story room and municipal wayfinding. $1.955 million for various infrastructure improvements throughout the city. This includes the anticipated Coolidge Water Main and Catalpa Sewer Replacement Project of $1,070,000, as well as routine repair and maintenance of various city streets and sewage lines. $285,000 for expansion and upgrade of the public safety building. $132,500 within the Downtown Development District for streetscape improvements, facades, and wayfinding projects. $275,000 expansion of the fire hall at the public safety building, and $900,000 purchase of new aerial ladder truck to replace the current 30-year-old truck. Funds for this, leave that part out.
Okay. So we are looking at a capital improvements plan, again, public structures and improvements. About $18 million is what this plan looks at over the next seven years. It was not that long ago that we did not have a capital improvements plan, or the one that we had was really just in name only, and it was just kicked down the road because we weren't able to put any money away or put any plans, because we were still trying to recover from 2008, 2009. We are now at a point where we are able to plan for the future. We know infrastructure is of incredible importance for us, and this plan takes into account some of the things that were just mentioned by Mr. Pepperman. Additional questions and comments on the CIP? So we approved the 2018-19 plan as part of the budget. 24 through 25, or subsequent years after this year, will be revised on an annual basis, things fit, things don't fit, if things have to be moved, but these are the items that we want to take care of in the next seven years. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to comment, let everybody know that this is originally approved by the Planning Commission. is originally approved by the Planning Commission. So they, that organization has studied it, and we, and a budget meeting have met and discussed it last Tuesday night, I believe it was. So this has been, gone over in great detail, and I think it is a very good CIP force. I think they've covered everything. We need to get everything we need into that plan sometime, so that we can schedule it any out years and make sure that we get the money for it and keep the city running the way it should be run. So I think it's, it's a good plan.
It's a critical part of our plan, part of our budgeting process. If we don't know where we need to go and how we're going to get there, we're not going to get there. Additional comments, questions, the CIP? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R. 1818?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R. 1918, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, establishing a residential and commercial service fee for the collection and disposal of solid waste effective July 1st, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve R. 1918?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular budget funds all of our curbside pickup services. So whether it be the rubbish, whether it be recycling, whether it be the collection of yard waste, both bagged and curbside leaf collection, all comes under the purview of the sanitation fund. This is one of the way, and there are two primary funding sources for the sanitation fund, one of them being the rates you're looking at this evening, and one of them being a millage rate, which you'll look at here in just a few moments. Our costs are going up on this item, on the collection of this item, so it does require us to, again, like I say, fund this adequately. We do anticipate dipping slightly into the fund balance for the next two years in an effort to fund some capital, or some equipment improvements on this. In order to continue to, to keep our curbside yard, our curbside leaf collection program going, we do require a rear-load garbage truck. So that's one of the big capital purchases of this year. The rest of the costs associated with the, with the fees here are continuation of our agreements through the South Oakland Resource Recovery Authority, which is SACRA. And they, they have subsequent agreements with the Tringali Sanitation, who services the city. So as those costs go up for, for the city, those costs end up going up for the individual residents as well. So you'll see the fees are reflected in the, the resolution here. It is a slight increase from what we previously were charging the residents. It does move from about, does move to about $58 a year from about $43 last year. So in quarterly installments, it's about four extra dollars on your quarterly bill. So, again, like I said, we're still joined by the Finance Department if there are any other questions.
Additional questions or comments from council? Councilmember Henan?
I was looking over the numbers. The costs seem to have gone up faster than our, the costs we are being charged. So part of that is that some equipment replacement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so do we see ourselves increasing much beyond wholesale costs in coming years to try and catch up on equipment? Or are we going to, you know, soon be in a place where we're caught up and mostly just passing through the wholesale cost increase?
That is where we want to go. We will continue to dip into fund balance in the next, in this budget year and the 1920 fiscal year in order to smooth those rates, so they don't, they don't increase substantially for people. But we do, we are on an increased path to get to a point where we are just passing through those costs and able to make investments in the capital portions as well.
Do we know about how many years of increases we're looking at?
I don't, can't say offhand, because it's hard to foresee the increases that get passed to us. We're on a, we're on about a three and a half percent cycle right now under the current agreement we're with, which is great, but it's difficult to see the unforeseen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a comment. As you imagine, now as we're looking at another rear-load or garbage truck, to save money, we're looking at a used one. We're scouring the area to find one that has been gently used by some of our neighboring communities but have retired, so that we can get it to save money for our residents but still do an adequate job with all of our solid waste pickup. So we're, we're not wasting money on a brand-new truck.
For leaf collection primarily. Right. Additional questions, comments? Nobody likes rate increases anywhere, but unfortunately for us to be able to provide the high-quality service to our residents, I, I know that the leaf pickup, the curbside leaf pickup is a very popular service that we provide. Unfortunately, the cost of providing that is having something to store the leaves and to pick them up. And we, we're all residents. We have to pay the same rates as everybody else. Believe me, we don't like it, but in situations like this, unfortunately, we have to invest a little bit of capital. And that's something that we need to do and hopefully continue to dip into the fund balance for the next couple of years to keep rates low, as low as we can possibly make them, until we get to that point where they finally can, can level off and we can just kind of pass through from Tringali. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R. 1918?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll, or no, please call Agenda Item Number 10, sorry?
Resolution Number R. 2018, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, setting the charges for water and sewer services effective July 1st, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve R. 2018?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much like the, the previous item, the annual cost of delivering high services to the, to the City of Berkeley comes with fees associated with it. In this case, we're, we're looking specifically at our water and sewer fees. We, as you know, two year, or at the beginning of the previous fiscal year, we reorganized our rate structure, moved to more of a variable rate system and relied less upon fixed, fixed costs. So basically, the, the more that an individual uses, or the less that they use, they do have more control over the bill that sells. So they would see a lower monthly bill, or a lower quarterly bill, associated with lower usage. And so this is our second year under our new rate structure. And you see some of the consumption charges, the ready-to-serve fixed charge, the stormwater service fixed charge outlined in the memo below. And again, like I say, our, our finance staff is here to provide some service, some insight into it, speaking conceptually. The, many of the drivers of this particular fund are also drivers of our sanitation costs. It would be pass-through amounts, this time purchased from the water, Southeast Oakland County Water Authority, so SACWA this time, which in turn is a direct consumer of GLEWA, which is the Great Lakes Water Authority. So a lot of acronyms, but the important part is at the end of the day, when you turn your faucet on, clear, reliable water comes out of it. And then when you flush your toilet, obviously, you get the expected result from that as well. But again, it is pass-through costs as well as capital investments that drive the, the rates on the water and sewer account. We are looking to do more water replacement, or water projects. We have a looping project scheduled this year for Coolidge that's funded through the rates that you pay. Likewise, continuation of our, our current place piping program, which we've almost, we're almost up to 30% of the city now. We talked in depth about this during the previous budget work session, but we are trying to increase the reliability of our system, its, its resiliency, its ability to handle all storms. And so many of the improvements that we, we look to make on the stormwater side are funded out of these same rates as well. And obviously, we're hoping for a little boost in those revenues in November as well. But you see exactly how we fund those items. The budget document goes into great detail. The narrative portion goes into great detail about how we put the, the individual ratepayers' monies to use in relying, delivering reliable service. I don't know if there's any additional comments from finance staff or not.
What I would note is that the proposed increase from 18 to 19 is basically about $8 a quarter, so about $32 a year increase. I think that's a fairly reasonable rate increase for water and sewer.
Say, much like this one, we are dipping into fund balance in order to smooth the rates a little bit, but we, much with the last conversation, we want to get to a point where we do have 100% of our fund allotted for, appropriated for through the rates we pay.
Mr. Baumgartner, because you, you mentioned at the beginning, a, a new rate structure about a year ago. And, and, you know, as Mr. Pepperman just mentioned, we're talking about eight, $8 a quarter here, and residents who are looking at their bills are saying this is much more than $8. The $8 that we're talking about obviously isn't even there yet. It's going to be additional. So can you take a couple of minutes and kind of go back over what you mentioned, how it's much more connected to use and volume of usage, and how that rate structure came about?
Without a doubt.
So people don't confuse that with, with this, and we have a better understanding of how we got to this point.
Sure. Looking back at some of the items that we had prepared for us in the, when we enacted this structure, some of the objectives here were to fund our operations, to pay debt service, to make necessary capital improvements, and maintain adequate reserves, and of course, smooth the rate and str, smooth the rates. Again, previously, we relied heavily on a fixed cost. So your ready-to-serve charges were nearly $60 a bill, depending on the size of your meter. That, no matter what, you could use a single drop, you could use, you could fill your pool. No matter what, you were seeing those rates reflected in your billings. Some may have seen more than $8. The numbers cited by the finance staff were the average use. So average, the average Berkeley bill is about 1,500 units used each quarter. If you were to utilize more of those, obviously, you would see more increase there. But the intent here was to give the resident back some control over the size of their bill each quarter, to utilize maybe some water-saving strategies, and actually have that pan out to additional extra dollars in one's pocket. So you could, again, like I said, it, it was maddening to, that somebody who uses nearly nothing, you know, maybe a single person at home versus a family of 10, but basically, they're seeing the same charges no matter what, when we know that one would have more of a, an impact on the system than the other. So this was an attempt to really make this a lot more fair, a lot more equitable, and again, like I said, offer some control back to the resident.
Where did that come from? How did?
We worked closely with Plant Moran, our audit agency, who is consulting these rate studies across their entire footprint. So they took a good look at our charges, they took a good look at the, where our expenditures lie, they looked at some of the issues that we've had in assessing and capitalizing large projects, and they made the recommendations based on the, the way that Berkeley residents use the water, the way that we've invested in our system, and where we need to go in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or, or comments, I guess, as we're looking at these numbers today? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment that I keep the council informed of where we stand among the 10 communities, and in the past, we've been third from the bottom of the 10 communities in the rates, and it's based on a 4,000 cubic foot. We are well below the, the average. These are last year's numbers. It looks like we're going to be about in the same place next year from things we've heard from other communities. So we'll get this back out again in August when every community finalizes their rates, but we are not anywhere near the top. In the past, on this thing, we are $379, while Royal Oak is at $539. So our rates are quite low compared to the surrounding communities.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Thank you, Your Honor. And one observation I've made is that most of the increase in rates that we have this year, not all of it, but most of it, is our pass-through costs, what we are being charged by our wholesalers. So while a little bit of it's going towards our capital, most of it is going to other entities.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Seeing no more questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R. 2018?
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. R. 2018 has passed. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R. 2118, matter of approving a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve R. 2118?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this item, we actually have a prepared presentation for you. So give me just a quick moment.
That, we put that, we put that projector from the ceiling.
It would be, yeah.
Budget, that should be on this presentation. So we're taking care of that.
Yes, we are looking at ways to get that accomplished.
Okay.
While we're preparing the presentation, just a couple of quick notes. This, annually, we bring to you the City Council, a, a good accounting, our best forecast of not only where, where our revenues will be coming from, but also in what amount we believe they will come in. And we put this in a resolution showing fund-by-fund how we intend to utilize the city's money, the, that is provided to us by the voters of the city itself. The city is broken, the city's budget is broken into several funds. Most of the city's operations, most of the departments are funded through the general fund, but there are, there's a specific fund for our major streets, our local streets, as we discussed previously, sanitation and refuse pickup, water and sewer. And we have a community development block grant, which is how we expend federal dollars that are awarded to the city, as well as a recreation revolving fund, which funds, as you can imagine, the entirety of our recreation department. Likewise, with senior funds, 11-mile street bonds that are the debt that we incurred to redo 11 Mile many years ago. We do have, also have funds for the district corridor, for the sidewalk fund. While not active, they are presented for you for, as part of the total budget. Likewise, same goes with the arena fund, but also the enterprise funds, like our water and sewer fund and our fringe accounts. And that would be the, how we account for the long-term costs of employing individuals with the city. So just a quick overview of how the city's budget is structured. So I will yield my time to the finance staff.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. See if I can, does this thing work? Whoops. So what we do, we prepare a multi-year budget. And the advantages of preparing a multi-year budget are improved financial management, improved long-range and strategic planning. Our linking our operating and capital activities and planning is beneficial to maintain adequate reserves. A rolling multi-year budget involves year-round. It helps to avoid a last-minute discovery of any financial crises. Our challenges in doing this is that the variability of the local economy, difficulties in forecasting revenue and expenditures, and projecting revenue and expenditures may be difficult for some departments. Some of our general assumptions, our taxable value increased 6.6%, and the millage rate decrease of 1.75% thanks to our friends at Headley, which resulted in estimated annual overall tax revenue increase of 5.9%. Our state shared revenue increased 6.6%. We have planned for 2% salary increases. Our health care has increased 9.8%. Our merged pension cost is going up 10%. Our public safety pension cost is going up 6%. We are anticipating a decrease in CIP requests of 511,525, and an increase in capital equipment request of $1,048, 900,000 of which is the fire truck. The balance of that is for the improvement to the fire hall, to house the new fire truck. Excuse me. So our general front revenues are broken down like this. 63% comes from property taxes, 13% from state and federal sources, 8% from charges for services, 6% from licensing and permitting, 3% from transfers in, 2% from property and equipment rentals, 2% from fines and forfeitures, 2% from miscellaneous, and 1% from investment earnings. Historical rates, as you can see, since 1996 to 2018, the inflation rate has been at a little over 3%, well, almost up to 4.4 in 2009, and typically averaging in the 2% range. So, Prop A, limited growth and taxable value to the lesser of 5% or the rate of inflation. We have not exceeded the 5% in any year since 1996. We have not exceeded the five percent in any year since nineteen ninety-six. So for example, taxable value in two thousand and seventeen of seventy-five thousand, six seventy-five, with an inflation rate of two point one percent, yields a taxable value in two thousand and eighteen of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars for an average home of one hundred and fifty-four, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The difference between our taxable values and our SEVs. Our taxable values, as you noticed, got real close in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen to the state equalized values. From that point forward, the spread has gotten larger between what the taxable value is and the SEV value. Reason for that is that you are limited by Headley as to how much you can increase the taxable value. So if you notice, we've got about a hundred and fifty million dollar delta in two thousand and nineteen between our taxable value of five hundred and seventy-one million dollars and the state equalized value of about seven hundred and twenty-two million dollars. Property taxes for Headley rollback. We are now down, our max operating levy was ten mils, two thousand and fourteen voter-approved mil with three mils, our max public safety of three mils, our max sanitation of three mils, for a total mil of nineteen. With the Headley reductions, we are now down to twelve point three two oh two percent, so a loss of six point six mils, which generates, based on this year's taxable value, a loss of revenue of about two point two million dollars. And if you'd been able to tax it in SEV, you would have received that money. Property tax values for two thousand and nineteen, based on our rates, we should collect on the general fund about still over seven million dollars. Adding sanitation and the eleven-mile road debt, we'll collect eight point two million dollars. Our reduction factors since two thousand and nine through two thousand and fourteen of one. We are now down to, in eighteen, a point nine seven five two reduction factor. Our taxable values increased about six point six four percent. Our operating tax revenue increased about three point three percent for a total increase of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars in taxable dollars. Our property tax and our neighbors, as you see, we are somewhere in the middle in this scale, based on the amount of property taxes paid on a seventy-five thousand dollar taxable value. So a low in Novi of seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to a high in Oak Park of two thousand and eight hundred and twenty dollars. Our property tax historical tax rates, as you can see, in two thousand and fifteen, we are at seventeen point five four five four mils. We are down to fourteen point nine oh eight three mils in two thousand and nineteen. We continue to have a decline in our millage rates due to the Headley cutbacks. So what happens to the average homeowner between last year and this year? Well, last year, they would have, on average, would have paid one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And this next year, because of the increase in the property values, up to one thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars or basically a four-dollar annual increase in your taxes. Our state shared revenue, if you notice back in about two thousand, we were just under two million dollars, one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That has been cut steadily by the state and is just now starting to recover a bit. The constitutional has remained fairly steady. The statutory has taken a substantial reduction since two thousand, down to what it is in two thousand and nineteen.
Right. And John, just for a quick second, because that's something that we've talked about up here. Council has mentioned a number of times, and it kind of puts it in a little different perspective for the residents. So when we talk about shared revenue being constantly cut in the state of Michigan, we're talking about the red in that graph right there. The blue is constitutional, they can't do anything with that. The red part is kind of discretionary, and they can decide whether that's going to go to municipalities or if it's going to go somewhere else. And you can pretty clearly see, if you look back, you know, from ninety-eight to where, you know, how high the red line was in comparison to where it is now. That is a substantial loss that we have had no choice, no say, but have had to deal with in terms of making the rest of our budget work and continuing to provide a high-quality service. Now, state shared revenue alone, you can see the numbers, does not certainly make or break our budget, but it has a significant impact in where else we have to pull from the general fund and reductions in general fund dollars to continue to offer the services that we offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So charges for services, this is a revenue represent eight point eight percent of general fund revenues. It's estimated the city earned about nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. These consist of breath test fees, garbage bag sales, library services, internal services, dispatch services, which we are budgeting an increase of eighteen thousand dollars in anticipation of a new contract with Huntington Woods, animal control services, grass and weed cutting, gas sales. Those are, gas sales are to one of our neighboring communities and also to the school district, cable franchise fees, and public safety services. Other revenues are licensing and permits, about five point eight percent. That's holding kind of constant. Our new builds, it looks like it may have peaked in two thousand and sixteen, dropped a little in two thousand and seventeen, and...
We are...
Tim left, and we're...
Think you're looking at me right now?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think we're talking about seventeen right now.
Yeah. But we are projecting that residential new home construction will continue to decrease over the next few years, and will start to get back to a space that's a little bit more normal. I think we'll sort of move past the boom that we've had over the last few years, and we'll see a normalization of that particular type of construction. But we continue to see Berkeley residents invest in their homes, making small improvements, whether it be to the building itself, whether it be to their electrical system, mechanical system, the site, the property itself. But again, like I said, what Mr. Pepperman is alluding to is that residential new builds are likely to decrease.
Other revenue highlights are fines and forfeitures of two percent, investment earnings of half a percent, property and equipment rentals of one point eight percent, contributions and donations of four tenths of a percent, miscellaneous of one point four percent, and transfers in of about nine point five percent.
John, I got a quick question for you on that.
Sure.
You look at, we're looking at all of, some of those numbers there, and you see investment earnings, and you see a half a percent. Can you talk a little bit more about what that means? Because some residents might see that and say, you're investing in the wrong things.
Well, it's not so much you're investing in the wrong things, it's what you can earn out there right now in relation to what our total budget is. You know, interest rates are at a historical low. Most of that investment earnings is based on what's invested in what I call bank instruments. So you're trying to be safe and conservative with the money you have. You're not taking risky investments, I'm not investing in hedge funds or derivatives or things like that, which can generate a higher rate of return but have a much more tremendous risk.
Sure.
So we're trying to balance risk with return.
Right. And also, on this particular slide, investment earnings are only point five percent of our total overall revenues. Whereas, you know, sixty-three percent of our revenues come from property taxes, that's something like eight million dollars. So I think we're investing well, it's just pales in comparison to our other sources of revenue, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. And there, I think, just for kind of informing purposes, you know, there are Public Act twenty restrictions with how, you know, a local entity can actually invest in money.
Correct.
Just a quick comment. We started investing with the county about a year ago, and our investment return has gone up in the past two years. So it looks like it's small, but it's bigger than it was, so.
Right. Thank you.
County does a nice job of managing the money.
Continue.
Do you? Okay, our general fund expenditures, as you see, salary and fringes make up about sixty-nine percent of our expenditures. Capital outlays about sixteen percent. Contractual services, seven percent. Materials and supplies, three percent. Transfers out, three percent. Other charges, four percent. Utilities, one percent. Insurance, two percent. For a total of about twelve million, five hundred thousand dollars of expenditures. Salaries and fringes for FY nineteen make up seven point nine million dollars, about three hundred and forty thousand dollars higher than last year, or about four point four percent increase. This includes active salary fringe as well as retiree healthcare cost. All fund salary costs increased four percent due to negotiated contract increases and adding one new DPW staff.
So just to sort of further clarify and place some context in there, on average, existing employees did not receive four percent. Our salaries are low enough, and our pool of employees is low enough, that the increase of just one individual to the DPW staff skewed that number a little bit higher. Our actual increases were closer to two percent on an employee-by-employee basis. So we did not, like I say, four percent well exceeds what you saw earlier about the cost of inflation. We actually looked at, we actually, we're at about two percent for existing employees, which, as you saw earlier, was just about a tenth of a percent lower than the inflation rate.
Thank you for that clarification. Healthcare costs increased nine point eight percent from the prior year. Retirees moved to a Medicare Advantage Blue Cross Blue Shield plan in March of two thousand and seventeen. And self-funding platform that's going into effect for Blue Cross Blue Shield avoided a twenty-nine percent increase that we could have seen this year. That was rather shocking when that number was initially presented to us. I do believe two or three people grabbed their chests when we saw that. And it was well-received that Gallagher had thought about what do we do to get that cost down? And by doing the self-funding platform and sharing that risks helped to reduce that increase. We are an exceptionally healthy plan with healthy employees. But because we are in a pool, we are subject to the vagaries of the pool. Required pension contributions increased, public safety four percent, and MERS with the merit in DPW up nine point eight percent. Here's what we've got. We've increased by one over the prior year in the number of full-time equivalent positions. General fund contractual services, for this year, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, a decrease of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand from the prior fiscal year. What's in general fund contractual services? There are consultant fees, audit fees, legal services, actuarial services, inspections in the building department, library co-op, assessing services, and wayfinding. And to clarify, wayfinding is basically signage for finding your way around town. General fund capital outlays, planned for this year, two million, sixty-eight, one eighty-five. Aerial ladder truck and fire hall, an increase of about one point one million dollars. Three police vehicles of one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. DPW equipment of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, consisting of a dump truck with plow and spreader, a mower, a fuel management system, and security camera upgrades. For two thousand and twenty, we're looking at only spending six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Remodel and renovate dispatch over at public safety, an animal control truck with the appropriate equipment for fifty thousand. Public safety officer replacement car camera system, seventy thousand dollars. Two patrol cars for eighty-nine thousand dollars. Pickup truck with plow and spreader, forty-five thousand dollars. Mowers for forty thousand dollars. Anti-ice system, swap loader for twenty-five thousand dollars. Matt, on the spreaders and the plow, were those part of those special bodies we were ordering?
No, the pickup truck will be a more traditional plow and spreader with one that fits in the bed of the truck. The swap loader is actually what the model that the DPW has gone to in their last couple of purchases, where it's actually, the rear of the vehicle is removable and can be custom fitted to whatever the job at hand is. In this particular situation, it would be applying some anti-ice systems, such as salting or brining. But it would just as easily be able to load a box truck, would be able to load a chipping mechanism, or just a regular old dump bed if the need arises. So it makes our trucks far more versatile and reduces the need for us to buy new trucks for very specific items.
Thank you. Our general fund department expenditures, public safety, forty-nine percent, about six point two million dollars. City hall, nineteen percent, two point three million dollars. Public works, one point two million dollars for ten percent. Retirees, one point six million for thirteen percent. Library, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, six percent. Transfers in, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, three tenths of a percent. I think I covered them all.
So, just a note on that. Obviously, the public safety is the largest of our general fund expenditures. When you consider the fact that they are a twenty-four-hour service, as opposed to many of our other departments, all of our other departments, that are budgeted on an eight-hour shift, it is worth note that they run basically three times as long as any other department, but yet are about half the city's budget. So they do a good job of making appropriate investments.
Okay, our general fund, our fund balances. Industry standards are somewhere between ten and twenty percent balance to expenditure ratios. State of Michigan fiscal distress indicator is thirteen percent. We are nowhere near to that thirteen percent level if you look at the percentages of our fund balances. Projected for eighteen, nineteen, thirty-eight percent, and then rising in nineteen, twenty to forty-one percent. Level of fund balance is necessary depends on our risk tolerance, known upcoming spending, and size of the community. And we have a fairly healthy general fund, fund balance.
Which council discussed using some of for various areas. You know, one OPAB, the fire truck potentially may end up coming out of that fund as well. We want to certainly make sure that our auditors are happy with our fund balance, but we also want to make sure that we're just not sitting on it. We know that emergencies do happen. And at the same time, we want to make sure that we are looking at our current liability and not just kicking potential liability, other post-employment benefits down the road to future councils, future employees, and future residents of the city. So that's definitely something that we are looking at using some of that fund balance to help fund.
Okay, major streets. We have fifteen point six miles of major streets. Revenues of eighty, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, or eighty-nine percent from Act fifty-one. Forty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars, or four percent from the metro. Expenditures for nineteen, twenty, resurfacing of twelve-mile road between Greenfield and Coolidge, anticipated. Removal street administration costs, with the exception of audit fees. We continue to transfer to local funds, and our maximum transfer allowance is fifty percent of Act fifty-one monies to the local streets. Major fund charts show our fund balance dipping in the end of two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, recovering nicely in eighteen, nineteen, again in nineteen, twenty. This has to do a lot with whatever projects are going on as to how much...
The major driver you're seeing there in the seventeen, eighteen was a substantial investment the city made into Harvard Road, which is a major street. And I know it's sometimes difficult to tell major streets from local streets. The state actually makes a determination on that. But as you see from the expenditure side, that was a one point eight million dollar project that yielded beautiful results. And actually, there was some other funding coming out of, like, water and sewer fund for the additional infrastructure placed there. The bulk of it was paid out of major streets after saving up for several years. As you see, we had a relatively high fund balance moving into the seventeen, eighteen expenditure year, which is formerly how we had to sort of monetize these projects. We had to wait as the fund balance built until we had the capacity to do one single project, spend it down to a very little bit, and then hope to build it up again. It's a cycle we hope to break in November.
Okay, local streets. We have almost thirty-six miles of local streets. Revenues from Act fifty-one compromise sixty-five percent, or three hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Transfer in from major streets, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Three percent charge for services, seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars, which is fines, forfeitures, and investment earnings. And expenditures, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, or nineteen percent increase in street maintenance. And here we go, here's how our expenditures grow in our local street fund balance. And you have fairly healthy local street fund balance. Solid waste of our favorites. Revenues, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, or sixty-seven point eight percent from property taxes. Four hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, or thirty-one point one percent from charges for services. Increase in residential charges... Increase in residential charges from $10.75 a quarter to $14.50 a quarter. In FY 19, we budgeted for an elimination of yard waste stickers. Expenditures of $1,076,425 for 2019 or 69.8 percent of total fund expenditures. Our remaining costs are DPW labor, garbage bins, equipment rental, vehicle maintenance. And as was alluded to earlier, we're looking at buying a gently-used garbage truck for around $180,000. So, our charts for solid waste expenditures, moving from $1,002 in 2015, 16, to $1,005 in 2018, 19, and down to $1,399 in 2019, 20. Our fund balance continues to decline and with a slight recovery in 2019, 20.
And part of the reason for that is simply that the expenditures dropped without the capital purchase of the dump truck in 19, 20, so it's a very minimal contribution of fund balance. But again, I would say we'll play that against the rates so that we don't, the, any subsequent increases aren't considered to be overly impactful to the residents.
Community development block grant. City receives approximately $40,000 from Oakland County. Funds are used for, in this fiscal year, removal of architectural barriers for disabled individuals to better access our public safety lobby and maintain ADA compliance. We have yard services that we perform and large print books that we make available. Recreation revolving. General administrative costs moved to the recreation revolving from the general fund. Parks and Recreation Director, Office Assistance and Maintenance Staff, Community Center Building and Equipment Maintenance, and Vehicle and Liability Insurance. This gives us a big-picture view of the cost of the entire Parks and Recreation Department instead of having it broken into a couple of pieces. Revenues, program charges, $547,500 or 45.2 percent. Transfers in, $350,000 or 28.9 percent. State grants of $180,000 or 14.9 percent. Expenditures, the administrative department, $489,787, 38.5 percent. Miscellaneous programs, $453,685 or 35.7 percent. Major components of that are $320,000 in capital improvement projects at Oxford Park restroom facilities and a splash pad. And then for fiscal 2019, 20, we're looking at $125,000 in playground equipment and $66,000 for two mowers. Youth camp costs, $191,033, 15 percent, and Dream Cruise, $66,315 or 5 percent.
Just as a note, we have, we budgeted for the state grants, but have not received notification on whether or not we receive it. If we were not, if we don't prevail this year in our applications for the state grant, the improvements to Oxford Park also are unlikely to happen. So, it's not like that amount of money just goes away and we still are left with the same amount of expenditures. We would, we would adjust our expenditures based on our revenues here, so.
Is this presentation online somewhere?
It will be after this evening.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're hitting the high notes of, because we still have a number of things with the budget that we want to discuss, and I want to make sure that we stay on track and keep everybody engaged.
Thank you, sir.
Going forward, Recreation Revolving Fund, this is the charts on expenditures and fund balance.
Right, so, speaking of highlights, so this is, as you see, where the direction of the fund balance here, there will be future considerations on additional transfers in the Recreation Revolving Fund. To your point earlier about the fund balance being, looking like it's very, very high, it currently sits where it's at with the knowledge of future looming expenditures on the horizon, so.
Senior Activities, revenues, $52,000 or 58.4 percent from contributions, donations from like from Smart and Beaumont Hospital. $22,880 or 25.3 percent grant revenue, Smart Grant. $12,800 or 14.2 percent for senior charges for services. Expenditures are similar to the prior year. Operating transfers out to Rec Revolving Fund of $100,000 cover costs of past year administration costs that benefit the senior activities, i.e. for the Parks and Rec Director, Office Assistance, and so on. As you see, there's our charts on the expenditures over 15, 16 through 19, 20.
Very stable fund.
Yep. Downtown Development Authority. Revenues, tax revenues are two mils and we can collect $39,735 or 13.6 percent. Property tax capture is $193,756 or 66.4 percent. State reimbursement for personal property tax, $26,750 or 9.2 percent. And contributions and donations of $29,650 or 10.2 percent. Major expenditures are placemaking, flower baskets in public art for $35,000. Market analysis of $50,000. Facade grant incentive program of $25,000. Streetscape improvements of $77,500, and wayfinding of $30,000. As you see, the DDA fund expenditures are going up, dipping, and our fund balance is still relatively healthy. Debt service, 11-mile road debt.
The big part, the big thing here is that it's, we're nearing the end of our obligation. It's set to mature and it will no longer show up on a person's tax bill after 2021, so we're coming really close to paying this off.
We're building, no transfers out to general fund for architectural costs, sidewalks, account for special assessment levies, construction costs related to citywide sidewalk engineering costs charged to major local streets.
So, these are funds without a lot of action.
Enterprise Fund, we anticipated the closure of the ICE Arena in August 2017. We are using utilized utility costs of approximately $20,000 to operate the arena for Berkeley Days in May 2018, and then once Berkeley Days were over.
Yeah, so this Berkeley Days was the last item, was the last big event to be hosted there, so we'll be looking at a permanent closure and making some, some decisions on the building in the upcoming months and probably the next fiscal year, so.
Enterprise Funds, Water and Sewer Fund provide 29.2 percent of all city revenues. Consumption charges are based on actual water usage, $3.9 million or 54.8 percent. Radio serve charge based on meter size, $651,000 or 9.1 percent. Stormwater charge, proportional spread of debt and drain commission stormwater charges of $2.3 million or 32.2 percent. Non-residential user charges, commercial industrial pass-through of $57,000 or eight tenths of a percent, and other late fees, investment, equipment rental, state grants of 3.1 percent. Our expenditures, bulk water to Saquaw, $918,000 or 10.3 percent. Our bulk sewage of $1,034,908 for 11.6 percent. Our storm flow of $1.7 million or 18.9 percent. Salary infringes of $839,000, 9.4 percent, which includes our DPW director, new mechanic, and internal service labor, and general fund service, treasury finance, da-da-da. Building improvements, replace outdated electrical and emergency lighting for $60,000. An office area generator for $15,000. In 2019, 20, we want to upgrade or add HVAC, the conference room conversion of $80,000. Vehicle and equipment purchases of $512,500 or 5.8 percent. City service and curb stop install replacement for $52,500. A dump body for the swap loader for $25,000. Water meter replacement and hydrant assemblies of $60,000. Escape hybrid replacement for $35,000 and a one-ton dump truck for $175,000. In 2020, we would like to acquire a meter van for $40,000 and a dump truck with plow spreader for $275,000. Our sewer lining program continues for $300,000 a year, 3.3 percent. And our debt service, a principal and interest of $529,327 or 5.9 percent. Plant and ran performing.
I think we've covered this one pretty well.
Okay, bye-bye. I think we've covered this also.
Yes.
And that. And as Councilman Blanchard alluded to, this is where we're at.
Yep.
We are very competitive in our water and sewer rates. That concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you, John, for that pretty in-depth look at our, at our budget and the budget for this year and our budgeting as well for 19, 20. From that, that's a real high-level kind of almost a, you know, 30,000-foot view of the major items impacting each of the different funds that we have. Carry pass-through costs, I should say. There were some capital improvement items in there as well, but that probably does not give everybody a completely accurate picture of some of the things that we've talked about over the last, or last week on Monday night and Tuesday night. Going line by line through the items in the budget, talking about this and that. Do we think this should be here? Do we not? Do we think that number's too high? Do we think maybe we should shift something over here? So, we did spend quite a bit of time combing line by line, and there are some items that weren't on that, that are, that came as a result of our discussion that, yeah, I think we want to take just a couple of minutes to, to go over. One of them that we've been talking a lot about was code enforcement, and council unanimously, without a lot of effort required, wants to put more into code enforcement. And we are willing to, we've decided to put in an additional, our part-time employment in code enforcement, to have code enforcement throughout the weekend as well, whereas right now, we are kind of stopping and then we didn't have anything over the weekend. That's not going to be the case moving forward, once we can move through and fill that position. Is that accurate?
And you'll see an advertisement for that vacant position either today or, if it didn't hit today, it will hit tomorrow, so we wasted no time on filling that spot.
Excellent. Also, that we talked about, we're the door hangers for code enforcement as well, so oftentimes, you know, when people think about code enforcement right now, we're just talking about new builds, new construction, and that's not just the case. There is, we need to be a little more stringent with enforcing our code all around, across all areas, and there are these door hangers that hopefully you will not see, but if you do see, and that has nothing to do with construction, new builds. That's the nuisance cuts that we talked about earlier and some of the other items, potential rodents, the infestations. Those are the things that we're looking to make sure that we're ramping up across the board. We've talked about our new process and expectations from the council in terms of what we expect from, in our code enforcement, and it's simply to enforce our code. We have our code. I don't know that our code needs to be made much more strict. We have it, we just need to enforce it the right way, and it's, it's difficult to, when you've done something for whatever reason over the past few years, it's difficult to change that and get people to change. So, that's what we're dealing with right now. We are enacting, enforcing our code, and we're going to bring in some more help to make sure that we continue to enforce our code, not just in new builds, but across the board, because the residents expect certain things from the city of Berkeley, and I expect that as well, and this council does as well, and we're not going to sit back and disregard that when we go through this document. The budget document is the most important thing that we do as a, as a council. It's how we are spending the residents' money. You got a pretty good idea there of how Proposal A and Headley, I should say, limit, you know, growth. Some people think, oh, your economy's doing great, you guys have all this money. Well, again, it doesn't work necessarily that way, so we have to be very efficient with our dollars from the residents. And again, Matt, if you wouldn't mind, talk a little bit, I don't have my budget book with me, but if you, if you have it from memory, the dollar, picture of the dollar, as to where your dollars actually go.
Yes, so, yeah, and it's a good point. We collect on behalf of many different organizations, whether it be the state, the county, regional bodies, such as the DIA or the zoo. When you pay your, your tax liability, you come and pay your taxes to the city, we are only a small portion of that, and we're not even the majority of the dollar. We, as Councilmember Blanchard said, 38 cents of every dollar that you pay to the city ends up going towards municipal operations. We just happen to collect on behalf of many others.
So, I could go on a little more, but I'll allow other council members to speak on the budget, the budget process. We have, to my left here, the folks who got to go through that process for the first time. Any thoughts, questions, comments? Okay, super, excellent. Right side, what do you guys feel about this?
We set a new record this year, the longest budget meeting, four hours and 45 minutes.
Yeah, and that was just the second night. I mean, the endurance of this council and the ability to absorb information and go through this just continues to astound me. I think you guys spent a total of over eight hours in two days focused just on this item, so it was very in-depth conversation, and I thank you for that.
And as I said, this is, you know, the most important function, I think, that we serve is being good stewards of the residents' money, so we don't have a problem having that type of meeting. And when it's all said and done, we are, from a fund balance perspective, in a pretty good place. Our auditors would certainly agree. We are able to maintain the quality of our services. We have a pretty aggressive but required capital improvement plan that we talked about earlier, and we want to continue to make sure that what the residents want and what we're able to do, we're able to provide those high-quality services. That's what makes Berkeley unique, that's what makes Berkeley special, that's why people want to be here. So, I was, despite the fact that the second meeting took a little bit longer than previous regimes, and I've heard about that from former mayors. I honestly, all it does is it just means that I show more care for, for the city of Berkeley. I do think, in all honesty, it's a very solid budget. It paints the city in a good light. I know our auditors will agree, there are a couple of things that we're still, again, as it relates to OPEB, still looking to find ways where we can cover our future obligations, but there's something that we're talking about. Some of our neighbors came and have that conversation right now. And residents, have, I know a couple of you at least were at those meetings and put the time in as well with us. Does have any, anything you'd like to say? No? Oh, sure.
Natalie Price, Berkeley resident. I attended the meetings and I was grateful not only that you put in the time and explained the process enough for those of us who hadn't been part of it before, but also that you were always thinking toward the future, looking at how will your decisions impact not only this year, not only next year, but the next 10, 20 years of Berkeley. So, thank you for having that mindset, taking the time, and doing it well. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Natalie. Seeing no additional comments from council or the residents here, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to the communications portion of our evening. Who's up first?
Councilmember Dean.
Councilmember Dean.
Okay. Just have a few notes here. Berkeley Days, it was fun. I'm laughing because I didn't realize that council was, there was an expectation of softball playing in horseshoes, so I was the best spectator for softball. I did throw horseshoes, and I'm very grateful to my opponent, Steve Allen, who has the patience of a saint, and he's a good sport. I had a lot of fun. Taste of Berkeley was excellent, as it is every year, and very well-attended. Our Humanitarian of the Year and Citizen of the Year awards were, that was an exciting part, to be part of that. So, I'm grateful that, for all that Denise Brainerd does to put on Berkeley Days and everybody that works with her on that. We've got an excellent community of residents who are very involved and in things that really do bring value and worth to the city in a, in a very fun way. My Parks and Rec hat goes on now, and just some brief announcements there. Tot Lot Storytime in the Park, June 10th at, I'm sorry, June 12th at 10:00 a.m. Senior Picnic at J.C. Park, Thursday, June 14th at 11:00 a.m. And just a reminder that summer camp registration is up and running, and you may register at Berkeley.maxgalaxy.net. Thank you.
Councilmember Henan?
My next talk with Dennis is going to be this Thursday, May 24th, at noon to 2:00 p.m. at the library, having a daytime session for anyone that can't make it in the evening. The Environmental Advisory Committee, their upcoming next meeting is also on Thursday, the 24th, at 6:00 p.m., second story of the Public Safety Building. At the Art Bash coming up on June 9th, the committee will be manning a bike corral. You can bring your bikes to, they'll be at Gardner and 12, and leave them there, they'll watch over them, make sure they stay safe, so you can avoid taking your car into downtown. Then, we heard from the tree, Ms., we heard from Margaret earlier, from- Uh, then, we heard from the tree, Ms., uh, we heard from Margaret earlier, from the Tree Board, and the City Tree Program coming up, want to really encourage people to, uh, look into that, uh, the trees are very affordable compared to what you'd get, uh, the due date for that is August seventeenth, that's the same day as Cruz Fest, so helps you to remember that, and, uh, the supplies are limited, so don't wait, thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, Planning Commission met last month, and actually, a lot of it was already on the agenda here tonight, so not a lot of reason to rehash, I suppose, um, the one thing that was not, there was a planning consultant report for La Salette, uh, discussion about the analysis done on the positives and negatives about the proposal, um, uh, parking, mass, scale, height, everything like that, uh, the next meeting is actually tomorrow at seven thirty, uh, so that's it for planning, uh, echo, uh, Councilmember Dean's comments on Berkeley Days, it was a lot of fun, very enjoyable, starting to think my family might have some issues with me based on dunk take attendance, so.
It's not just your family.
Yeah, fairly not. So, it was, uh, it was very enjoyable, though, despite, uh, getting pretty well walloped in horseshoes, and, although close in softball, so.
That's right.
Uh, and then the last thing is, just want to thank, uh, city manager and staff for all the work done on the budgets, you can obviously see it's quite a task, uh, in front of the, the staff, and, uh, did an excellent job informing the council during the budget work sessions, uh, and certainly going through it tonight as well, so thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
Berkeley Days was absolutely great this year, um, with the exception of that one huge downpour that we had about five, between five and six on, um, on Saturday, but other than that, it was great, the Taste of Berkeley was wonderful, they actually had to turn away people at the door because they had too many, too many people this, this time, this year. We were, the, our team was, um, pretty good in softball, but we were absolutely pathetic in horseshoes, um, so that's all I have to say about that. In terms of the library, um, please check, uh, there's so many events happening in the library all the time, please check the city website for the events, there's storytimes, there's, um, there's speakers that come in the evening and during the day, uh, there's groups that get together there, so please check the website for things that might interest you, and make sure you register if you're interested in something very quickly because they fill up fast. Beautification Committee is, um, going to concentrate on, uh, the bus stop that's, um, by the cemetery, um, on Woodward, and then, uh, keeping up with the other bus stops around, so, and that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor, uh, I'd like to thank the Berkeley Days Committee and all the volunteers who put that together, there was an awful lot of work went into that, they, this thing started on the morning of the twelfth and, and went through last night, so it was a little over a week of activities, and there was a lot of volunteers who were really glad last night and went home and crashed, I'm sure. Uh, the Friends of the Library had their book sale at the library this year, they didn't have it at Berkeley Days, and as usual, they wrote to me, and that all the books that were left over, their paperbacks, we take down to the VA, so I made a trip this afternoon, was probably somewhere around twelve hundred paperback books for the VA Hospital in Detroit, and they were very appreciative of that, so got that down today. Uh, Councilmember Dean mentioned the Citizen of the Year and the Humanitarian, I just want to tell you who they are, uh, you're probably going to do that, weren't you?
Go ahead.
Uh, the Citizen of the Year was Drew Hatfield, and it was a well, well-deserved award for Drew, we surprised him, he was, he couldn't come to the ceremony because he was coaching baseball, so we took the ceremony to the baseball field and, uh, stopped the game and made the award, and it was, it was pretty good. And the Humanitarian of the Year, or the DPW Department, who do a tremendous job all year, I, I can't say enough about Derek and Sean and their crew because they're, they're outstanding, so, that's all I've got, you can have what's left.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, want to let everybody know that May thirtieth, uh, and we'll be having our next, uh, open house and informational meeting on the, uh, one of the November questions, uh, this will be specific to the infrastructure millage that we're proposing, uh, in November, and so come on down, the, it'll be at six thirty, I believe it's in the, uh, Public Safety Department, in the second floor conference room there, but, uh, we'll, we'll talk in depth about, uh, how the city intends to put those funds to good use, about some of the issues and challenges that the, the city faces, and, uh, why we feel that the, uh, additional funding is necessary to make a significant impact on the city's, uh, infrastructure, and, uh, whether it be the road network, the, the sewer network, the water, water network, whatever the situation may be from year to year, so, uh, again, I invite everybody to come out on May thirtieth, um, for that meeting. Um, I want to reflect what council said, I likewise had a great time in, uh, at Berkeley Days, myself, my family, I was appreciative to be asked into the dunk tank as well, um, I think I probably made a lot of larger splash than, uh, some of the other members up here, but, um, uh, great time had by all, I'm sure, and, um, you know, we came this close to getting our name in the good on the trophy this year for the softball game, but, uh, ultimately didn't quite make it. Uh, I know it's nighttime, but I do, as, as people are here, or anybody visiting City Hall in the next, uh, couple of days, take note of the landscaping, uh, our local resident, Doug Deeds, does a phenomenal job of making sure that, uh, we put the best face forward on our City Hall and in all of our city buildings, whether it be the Public Safety Department, the library, uh, we, we look much better because of the work of Doug Deeds, and, um, he's a great man, and, and he works really hard, and he absolutely has the biggest, greenest thumb, uh, I've ever seen in my life, so. Um, and the last item, the newly appointed members of the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, will be meeting with existing members, uh, I believe it's this week, and to talk about how to better communicate, um, and how to better engage with the residents of our fair city, I think one of the great, uh, places to be would be how to turn the work that we've put into the budget into, uh, a great narrative and great stories and, and, um, really relay how we intend to put, um, you know, your tax dollars to work, or your tax dollars, or your fees, or whatever it may be, but how it works for you as a resident of the city of Berkeley, so, look forward to the, um, to, to seeing good things out of that group, and that's all I have, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Uh, our, our city manager just, uh, spoke about Doug, uh, Doug Deeds, and I'm going to take actually a minute to talk about another Doug, Doug Provost, I don't know if any of you know Doug Provost, um, he's an umpire, he's a softball umpire, specifically, at least last week, and, uh, made what I can only call the worst call of all time, like, in the history of the world, when he called me out at second base in the bottom of the seventh inning with the tying run coming around third base, so, um, I'm going to be organizing a protest Provost, um, at all baseball games this year in which Doug is an umpire. I actually won't do that, I thought about it, um, now, I've known Mr. Provost an awfully long time, and, and I want to thank him and Dan Irwin for coming out to umpire the, uh, the softball game on Wednesday, um, yes, we lost by one run, I was thrown out in the bottom of the seventh round, he's second base, I'm pretty sure I was safe, but regardless, it was, uh, it was, it was a good game, we had a lot of fun, it was the closest that we've been in a number of years, we lost by one run as it, as it came down to it. The rest of Berkeley Days festivities, as everybody else mentioned, have been, were tremendous, as always, um, a little bit of weather here and there, but for the most part, uh, folks were able to, to come out, celebrate, have fun, I know a lot, I saw a lot of folks coming back to the city, uh, maybe who weren't around anymore, a lot of Facebook chatter, oh, it's Berkeley Days today, let's go, so that was, it was wonderful, um, all the events, Denise and her crew really, really do a ton of work, and we'll never understand how much time and effort they actually put into this, aside from being there for, you know, for all the days straight, um, all the planning, everything that goes into it, the, the amount of effort, and council got together actually before Berkeley Days this year and decided that we would reward them by allowing them to win horseshoes, and so, I want everyone to know that that was a plan this year, um, you know, it's like the whole little brother, you can't beat them every year, they're not going to come back, so, we decided, um, that that would be a nice reward for all of the work and effort they do, so they will be on that trophy, uh, as well, they did earn it, they thrashed us, actually, we didn't win a single game, like, we got, we got skunked.
It was ugly.
Uh, it was, it was, it was not good, um, but Berkeley Days was tremendous, um, I want to thank John for everything that he done, he did with the budget and the Finance Department, I want to welcome Ginger, we saw, uh, a pretty, again, a pretty detailed, um, report of what we're looking at now and also over the next two years. Uh, my, my attendance at this meeting was actually in question, um, but there was something that I, I was going to mention at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't realize I was going to make it, it was a kind of a last-minute weather decision, but the first Friday in June, um, happens to be June first this year, two thousand and eighteen, um, is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, now, this is kind of a national coalition, um, it is not politically motivated, it has nothing to do with whatever side of the political aisle or in the middle that you sit on, um, it's merely bringing intention and awareness to the fact that, you know, ninety-six Americans, um, lose their lives on a daily basis to gun violence, uh, we saw, unfortunately, again, what happened in Santa Fe last week, in, in a situation that is becoming, one, all too frequent, and something that we are becoming desensitized to seeing because it happens on such a frequent basis now, um, that it's, you get the alert on your phone, like, ugh, not again, as opposed to, oh, my gosh, this, like, how is this happening in our country, how is this happening and continuing to happen? Um, what the coalition, again, this national coalition is, is asking is that on June first, two thousand and eighteen, um, Americans will raise Hunter Orange, or where, I should say, not raise, where, Hunter Orange, um, on Friday, June first, in, uh, again, the attempt to raise awareness for gun violence, this is not, again, this is not politically motivated in any way, they're, support the Second Amendment, they, they support responsible, uh, gun owners, but what we're seeing on a far-too-frequent basis is, is people, you know, getting a hold of guns who maybe shouldn't have, and they're getting them from somewhere. So, anything that we can do to raise awareness for, um, for that, I, at least personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else up here, uh, but I personally am supporting that, and I wanted to make sure that I got that message out to everybody today. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Motion adjourned by Councilwoman Stedman, Swart, Councilwoman Dean, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. May twenty-first meeting is adjourned.